Okay, good evening. This is Huntley Community School District 158's Board Meeting. It's six o'clock on December 17th. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Garen?
Here.
Mr. Gentry? Mr. Troy?
Here.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mrs. Melendi?
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Here.
Mr. Craddy?
Here.
Mr. Gentry, did you hear me?
Mr. Gentry, are you out there? We saw you before.
It looks like you're on mute.
Yeah, I am here.
Okay.
Mr. Gentry is here, yes. Famous unused button. Okay. Got you. Got you. Okay. Good to have you with us, Kevin. Okay, got a quorum. So we're gonna like to make a motion to go into closed session at 6:01. Do I have a second? Second from Mrs. Meyerino. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yeah.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yeah.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving to closed session. We should be back up at around seven o'clock. Thank you.
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Garin.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Here.
Mr. Craddy.
Here. Okay, we're back. Like you said, we've suspended it.
So there's no action that's coming out of there, so we'll move to item four, which is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll lead. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five is student recognition. I believe we have Mr. Tom George to help present this, is that correct? Is Mr. George on the line?
I am here, thank you. Board members, I'd like to thank you for inviting us tonight to talk to you. Dr. Rowe, this is absolutely, in my years of teaching, one of the most favorite nights of a year for me. The opportunity to bring students before the board who have had great success as members of being Huntley Red Raiders. Tonight I have two young men with me, both seniors in high school this year, Luke Bacaro and Andrew Burkey. Last year during the state speech series, which was in the month of February, right before things kind of crashed on us. These two young men started in humor steward acting at the regional tournament in Huntley. They placed third there, and there was probably a little concern from all three of us about that. But the next weekend, they won the sectional, and then the following week at the state tournament, they finished fourth in the state. And all of the duets that finished ahead of them were seniors. So this was a really great accomplishment for these two young guys. They're both very funny, creative, and every time they go out and compete, whether it be for Andrew in tennis or in speech, or for Luke in theater or speech, they compete representing our community really well. And we should all be really proud of what they accomplished, but just who they are is people caring about the community of Huntley. So I'm proud to present them to you tonight in terms of what they accomplished. Humor Stewart Acting is an eight-minute acting event. They picked a scene at the beginning of the school year and started working on it. One of my assistant coaches, Keaton Fonstock, was instrumental in helping these guys prepare all season long and getting them to where they wanted to be. So I'd like to ask them if they could, would like to say a word or two. I don't know if we usually do that, but I don't know what else to say tonight, and I wanted them to...
No, go ahead, Luke.
So Andrew or Luke, do you want to say anything?
Don't jump in.
Quiet, guys.
Unmute yourself. Yeah, unmute yourself.
It was a really fun experience, and we owe a lot of it to Mr. George and all the coaches that helped us through the process. It was really cool, like the huge crowd that we were able to perform for. So it was awesome, especially if you think back how crazy last year got, to hold that memory is a good one.
Yeah, I mean, basically what Luke said, it was, it's an experience I'll never forget, performing in front of hundreds of people and being one of the best in the state, because we'll always be remembered for that. And then just the experience of getting to spend time with Luke and just both better our craft. It was a really fun experience overall.
Yeah, no, we're extremely proud of both of you and also Tom, George, all the effort you put into with the with the students throughout the years. You always do a fantastic job, and we appreciate your efforts and appreciate the efforts that both you young men put forth on behalf of the district and yourselves. So thank you, thank you both so much. It's great, it's great hearing a student's voice, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's tremendous. So thank you for joining us tonight, appreciate it very much. We'll find a medal for you here in one of these days.
Well, guys, well normally we'd have you come around and we'd say congratulations and give you a medal, but I believe you already have it, that's been in the mail, it's been sent to your house. So if it's not there already, it should be coming very soon. But congrats, our deepest congratulations, thank you for representing our school district and our community so well, couldn't be prouder of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Not to clap too loud into the microphone. A bit awkward, but okay, thank, thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna move on. Item six is to suspend a regular meeting. Make a motion to suspend the regular meeting at 7:10 to hold our levy hearing. There's voice call, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or second, excuse me, all right, second from Mr. Troy, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good, okay, so now we open up our December 17th, 2020 levy hearing at 7:10. Can we have roll call for that?
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mrs. Melendi.
Here.
Mr. Garin.
Here.
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino.
Here.
Okay, quorum. So we have our testimony for the 2020 levy, and we have Mr. Altmeier with his presentation. Take it away.
Thank you very much, hopefully everybody can hear me, and hopefully I can't tell, but I do have, okay, my presentation is up on the board. Well, it's really hard to follow student recognition, so, but I'm gonna try here with the levy as exciting as it is. In front of you, as part of your package, you do have the 2020 levy. But as you can see, I have, I have a brief, I'll try to keep a brief presentation in front of you. And with the operating property tax revenue approximating 60-plus percent of the overall revenue of the district, the passing and the approval of the levy on an annual basis is fairly important. At last month's board meeting, I shared the tentative levy with the board and the community, and that information, well, that hasn't changed. And as such, I'm not gonna cover the levy as much as I did last month, rather, I want to make sure that, well, all listening and even, even all the board members here tonight understand the levy and the levy process as well as some of the key points to consider tonight when passing and approving the levy at the regular meeting. Frankly, this is one of the most important things we do from a financial perspective each year. Yes, we pass a budget and we look at the five-year plan on an annual basis, but with property taxes representing over 60% of the revenue of the district and the impact that this has on our community, it's pretty important. And even though it's, we all know it's how we're primarily funded, you know, I'd like to note, it's, it's never easy asking for an increase in property taxes, whether it's from our community, our parents', or the businesses within our taxing district. So let's go to the next slide, here's what I'm gonna be covering today. If I can get to the next slide here, I'm having a little, there we go. Hopefully I don't have too much of a problem here on out. We're gonna cover, cover the levy, the purpose and the definition. We're gonna talk about the property tax extension law limitation, that's PTEL defined. We're gonna talk about historical CPI and what CPI is. We're gonna talk about the 2020 data points, some of those data points that we covered last month. And then we're gonna look at some Huntley 158 benchmark data, following by any recommend, or the recommendation that we have, followed by questions. Now, the levy by definition is just simply a formal request of a certain amount of revenue to be generated by the taxing process. After today's meeting, the board, the president and the secretary will, will sign a certificate of tax levy with the amount of the request that we're gonna talk through tonight. And when we file that, after that, we file that certificate with the county clerk's office, and we file it with both McHenry and Kane County. That will determine what will be billed for property taxes moving forward. Now, we have the purpose and the importance and the terms, and we've already talked about the purpose and the importance. Well, we've talked about that too, because it approximates almost 60% of the funding for the district. But some of the, some of the terms I want, want to talk through is the certified levy. And we've already mentioned the certificate of levy. Well, the certified levy is the annual levy certificate that is filed with McHenry and Kane County, which is signed by the president and secretary of our Board of Education following the approval of the levy. There's a debt service levy that's really not part of tonight's approval process. And the debt service levy is exactly, it's, it's how it sounds, it's our mortgage payment, it's our bond and debt and interest payment is part of the process, but that is outside of the scope of what we are asking for tonight, because that just becomes part of the taxing process, because we have to, we have to make our mortgage payment. We have to make those bond and interest payments on an annual basis. And then, of course, we have the Consumer Price Index, which is the inflation factor used for determining the extension. It's part of the calculation of the tax levy, and we're gonna go through that here shortly. So this is property tax extension limitation law, right? Our, our district is subject to PTEL, right, the limitation law. This law limits the increase of what we can ask for year over year to CPI, the Consumer Price Index, or 5%, whichever is less. Well, the good news is that CPI has never been above 5%, so historically we have always extended the increase of CPI. Right, the chart below outlines the basic calculation, yet it's, it's a little more complicated than the chart shows, but, but we can walk through it. And also note that this calculation excludes, as I previously stated, the bond and interest. The calc is prior year operating taxes extended multiplied by one plus CPI, plus the new taxes associated with new construction. So if we have new commercial property, the jewel, for instance, just went up, that will be part of next year's levy process, new construction or newly built homes. That's in addition to the calculation, that totals our current year taxes being levied or requested, as we talked about. The levy process, pretty, pretty simple, we, we've talked about the estimate, right? The Board of Education must estimate the levy 20 days prior to adopting the levy. This is done when administration presents the tentative levy, which is why we did that at last month's board meeting. So that's kind of state code there, the 20 days prior to adopting. Then we have the truth in taxation, and we talked about that a little bit too, is it's a statute that dictates when a district is required to publish notice and have a hearing for the tax levy process. We're having a tax levy hearing tonight. The hearing is required when there's an anticipated increase of more than 5% over prior year's taxes. Because CPI has been so low for the past several years, well, this hasn't happened, but we continue to hold a levy hearing because it's so, so important to the community and to the district. But we just don't incur the cost to publish the, the related notice for that hearing. And ultimately, the Board of Education needs to approve the levy and submit the certificate, right, of approval to the county clerks by the last Tuesday in December, which this year would be December 29th. We'll, we'll do that tomorrow though, we'll, we need to get that out of the way. Here, I wanted to share this chart, and this is a chart on property values and tax rates. And it's really to simply outline the inverse relationship, meaning if housing or commercial property market values decrease, well, that results in an increased tax rate. And the inverse is true, that if the market values, right, equalize assessed values increase, which they have been doing over the past several years since 2014, which is a good thing, the overall tax rate generally decreases, which is, this is a simple concept that I thought I should share. But if you look at our historical tax rate over time, you will see that it's decreased significantly since 2014 when market rates and EAVs started to pick back up within the residential market. This is slide on Consumer Price Index. So we've talked about CPI being a major part of the calculation, and this chart just outlines the history of CPI by calendar year dating back to 2007, and I apologize if you can't see the details, but 2007 was a high point of 4.1%, with all other years ranging from, well, 1/10 of 1% in 2008 and 3% in 2011, with an average over this period approximating a little less than 2%. This slide also explains on the left-hand side that CPI is a measure that examines, really, it's a weighted average of prices in a basket, if you will, a basket of consumer goods and services, and compares it to prior year to determine what is the increase over prior year. And that basket includes, well, rental properties, food and medical care, transportation costs, fuel costs, et cetera. So CPI is important because the district will receive, right, again, will receive the lower of CPI or 5% as an increase to last year's extension in accordance with the property tax extension limitation law. In addition to the CPI, if there's new construction, those tax dollars are over and above that calculation as well as what we talked about. So now, I probably shared with you more than you wanted to ever know about the levy, but I do want to share some of the key data points with the 2020 levy, which is what we shared in prior month. So with CPI at 2.3% for levy year 2020, right, tax bills are paid next year, including preliminary estimated new construction, and that's important, we'll talk about that in a minute. The district will extend approximately a little over $2 million in additional operating, operating property taxes in accordance with PTEL. Equalized assessed value with new construction is estimated to increase 4.1% from prior year's 1.45 billion to approximately 1.51 billion, so that's good to see. We'll talk about new construction here next. Estimated new construction at 12.2 million is up from 26.1 million from prior year. It's actually up almost 100% from the 2018 levy year, and that's significantly, it's 100% pretty much driven by an increase in residential development, so that's a good thing. Again, it's an estimate, we receive these on an annual basis from the county, from both McHenry and Kane County, and it's an estimate. And so we, we talk about ballooning our levy, increasing the amount we're asking for, because just in case that 12.2 million is actually 20.2 million or 25.2 million, we need to be requesting enough tonight to make sure we cover any shortfall. The capped operating tax rate is expected to decrease from two, $4.54 from prior years, $4.59. And we talked about that earlier with the inverse relationship, with market values going up, tax rates generally come down. Lastly, the levy has ballooned 1.5%, we increased the levy by approximately $1 million here to cover the estimate of new construction just in case the estimates we received from the county, well, they're not accurate. That gives us an additional $22.6 million of new construction. In other words, we can be off by $22.6 million, and essentially, we're not gonna leave tax dollars on the table by doing that. And the total levy request approximates 69.756 million. Now, we have benchmarking data, and I wanted to provide that benchmarking data so that we all know and understand why the levy process and the related funding, funding from the levy is so, so important to the, to the district. And I'm gonna have a lot going on here, but I'm gonna introduce little small segments at a time. So we have a few different charts to share here. This first chart is our operating tax rate, right, benchmarked against other local districts. And please note, we're the lowest tax rate in McHenry County, because when you look at Crystal Lake 47 or Crystal Lake 140, 155, those should be combined, because together they represent education for K through 12 students in Crystal Lake. And both of these districts show up on, well, if you have a Crystal Lake property tax bill, you're gonna be paying both of those, those rates that you see there. So we do have a very low rate. This next chart that I'm bringing in outlines equalized assessed value, or EAV per student per district, and represents, well, it represents property wealth of each district. Thus, you can see Crystal Lake and Barrington atop the list, and both have significant commercial property and, and probably higher-priced homes than we do here at 158. And you can see on this chart that we are not a property wealthy district, we're third from the bottom, right, at $153,000 per student versus the 155 at $486,000 per student. Now, what I'd like you to, to point out, or what I'd like you to look at here is, you know, we talked about market value and tax rate having an inverse relationship, right, high market value, low tax rate. And I've highlighted Crystal Lake and Barrington in green. And they show this relationship of having a very high EAV and a very low tax rate, right? Woodstock, well, they have... Woodstock, well, they have the same relationship, right? They have a very low EAV at 143,000, yet they have the highest tax rate around. Okay? So why is that important? Because on these charts, you can see that, well, we have both, right? We have a low tax rate and we have low EAV, which tells you that, well, we're not spending as much as the other districts. And we'll share another slide on that and it shows you that, well, we're operating efficient and we're providing value and we'll talk about that too. Lastly, I thought I would throw this in. Lastly, I share the EBF or the evidence-based funding tier by district, right? And, and this is the calculation, the evidence-based funding calculation is outlined by the state. A tier four district is a district that needs little to no additional state funding. They're deemed to be adequately funded. And the calculation has determined, well, that tier one and tier two districts are in need of significant additional funding. These are the districts in Illinois that, that frankly, they need, they need additional money, meaning we at, at tier two, and by the way, we're at tier two, but we're, we're very close, probably less than a percentage point away from tier one. You know, we are inadequately funded because we're only funded at 68% of what we should be at. And that's with current state funding, we're at 68%. So clearly, property wealth drives adequacy of funding, which is why, right? We want and we encourage new commercial businesses to come into the area so that we can receive additional tax dollars to put ourselves in a better financial position, frankly, for our students. Now, I hear, here I share operating cost per pupil and we're all familiar with this, right? This chart relatively speaks for itself. It measures how much we spend per student versus other districts. And on a per student basis, well, we spend all of, we spend less than all of the districts here, but we also spend less than almost all of the K through 12 unit districts in the Chicago area. I think there's one, maybe two now that are lower than all of us. And all of these data points from the tax rate to the EAV per student to this chart, well, these data points outline that, well, we're operating efficiently, right? That we're providing, we're providing value to the community. And the data also outlines that this is why we need to frankly, secure additional funding. Because there are so, so many things, so many more things that we want to do, that we need to do to support our students. We are inadequately funded. And God knows the state is probably not going to make up that difference anytime soon, right? Other reasons to approve and vote yes for this levy include the fact that we do have rising costs from labor and healthcare. And, and I mentioned the state of Illinois, the state of Illinois is in the worst financial condition, well, in the country, but in the worst financial condition that they've ever been in. And minus a federal bailout, there is significant talk about a cut in education funding here in Illinois, which would be devastating to every, every school district in the state. It would be absolutely devastating, but it would be almost crippling here at District 158 if, in fact, the state cuts our funding because it could cost us up to $2 to $3 million of additional funding, which we would have to make those hard decisions. So, so I wanted to share all those additional notes, which leaves us at this, our recommendation. The administration is recommending that the Board of Education approve the 2020 levy, 2020 levy, excuse me, as presented at 69.756 million, which includes a 2.3% CPI increase in accordance with PTO, as well as the additional ballooned 1.5%, a little over $1 million to cover the potential for additional new construction. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Altmaner? Anybody want to fire away? The anxious eyes over there. It's time for the levy. It's okay. Billy, you have any questions? Paul, how are you doing there?
Yeah. I, I know it's in the agenda or in your presentation, Mark, but could you just reiterate verbally what's written in there about the, the part that we don't do the assessments for individual homes?
Oh, sure, yeah. And, and I think what you're referring to is this, which I, which I shared last month as part of the memo that you have in front of you. And, and we do this every year. We kind of give a big picture estimate as to what a homeowner might expect their increase may be at 2.3%. And so at 2.0, I'll, I'll read it right directly out of the memo. At 2.3%, a homeowner with a $200,000 home will see an approximate $81 increase to the property tax bill for the school district. And that's important, right? Only for the school district. Please note that exclusive of the 2.3% taxpayers should be aware, because this happens, should be aware that individual bills will go up and down based on individual assessments as determined by the township assessor and/or the fluctuations of apportionment, because we're a two-county district between McHenry and Kane County. So, right? Tax rate goes up and down based on market values of homes and your neighbor's home may go up and your, 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 your home might go up even further. And if your home goes up even further than the average and your home is worth $200,000, its market value $200,000, you may well in fact see more than $81 increase simply because of assessments up and down throughout the whole taxing district. Excuse me. So thank you, Paul. Thank you for noting that. I meant to bring that up as well.
No, because we've heard it from the community multiple times that, that there is a presumption that, that we are responsible for raising or lowering their taxes year on year when, when all we're doing is asking for the pie and not, not where, not allocating where the slices of pie go necessarily, to paint the picture.
Correct. We as a whole are asking for a 2.3% increase in accordance with PTO. What happens beyond that is really driven by the county assessors as well as the, the apportionment between the counties.
And then the, the other question that, that I've seen online from people is if this doesn't, if we don't pass this or, or if we were asking for a flat levy, that doesn't necessarily correlate to a lowering of property taxes either. That, there's a possibility that they could still go up as those, those numbers get reapportioned out the following year anyway. So it's not, it's not that it lowers it, right?
Correct. But if, but if, if, if we, if we opted not to increase last year's extension by 2.3%, right? And everything stayed equal, assessed values throughout the taxing district stayed exactly as they were in prior year, well, their tax bill wouldn't go down, it would stay the same and they wouldn't see an $81 increase is another way to maybe say that or think about that.
That's fine, that's.
Right. Again, everything's on average. When you're talking about this stuff, it's on average. But what you need to understand is that across the board, on average, 2% EAV, equalized assessed value increase out there. A person with that average increase will, what Mark has presented will, will hold true. If their EAV increased at a rate greater than that, then their tax bill will go up greater than that. And if their EAV went down at less than that rate, then it will go down from that average. So, I mean, that's, that's how that works. Best way I can explain that.
No, I, I know that. I just want to make sure that we're asking the question for, for other people who, because if there is, we get those kinds of email questions all the time.
Yeah.
Have any? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm good. You're good.
Bear with me. I'm still learning all of this as well. So I appreciate the presentation, but thank you for that. And Mr. Altmaner or Mr. Luviana, can you help me with what the negative side is if we, if we don't pass? I've heard talk about never being able to go back and recapture money. Can you clarify that for me?
Well, that'd be correct. Or Tony, if you want to answer that.
No, Mark, you go ahead.
Yeah. So, yeah, i- i- if the board opts not to increase or pass the 2.3% of CPI, obviously, there's a huge financial impact to the district. There's a current year impact and there's an ongoing impact because that million plus, 1.5 million approximately, that we would not collect in revenue would be gone forever. In other words, we can't go back and recapture that 2.3%, right? And meanwhile, we have labor costs increasing at generally more than 3.5%. And I say generally more than 3.5% because over the next several years, you know, we have an obligation to meet the state law on the minimum wage. And so we're going to see increases that are above 3.5% more than likely between the unions and, and what we need to pay our employees. And so when we know that the average of CPI, right, which is our main funding source, and we have to consider it our main funding source, property taxes, because they are, right? And when the average of CPI is generally 2% and next year, based on what's happening with this pandemic and, and the economy, we already know that next year's CPI, right now, it's trending at like 1%, 1.1 to 1.2. I frankly think it's going to come in at 1%, which, so we're underwater, right? We have rising costs at 3.5 or higher. We have increasing healthcare costs at more than 5%, maybe 10%. And meanwhile, we have only incoming revenue increasing by 1% or 2%. And we don't know what's going to happen with the state of Illinois. The state of Illinois might cut our funding. So, so if you, and if that happens, if we don't pass this and we have a cut in funding and we have to trim our budget by three or $4 million or absorb it out of our fund balance, one way or another, whether it's this year, next year or the following year, we're going to have, we're going to have some cuts and a deep cuts. And we're not going to be able to keep those cuts out of the classroom. And what happens when, when that happens, well, classroom sizes will go up. Things will have to be, I, I don't even want to consider it, but things will be taken away. So, and when we're only at 68% of adequacy, we can't, I got to be honest, we can't afford to say we don't need it because we need it. We're only at 68% of adequacy. We're not adequately funded today and we know the future, costs of the future are going up more than incoming revenues are coming in. So I hope that helps explain a little bit. I know I threw a lot out there.
Yeah. And you, and you started to allude to the fact that you're losing the money this year, but the aggregate extension base, which gets created from this year, that's the starting point for next year's levy and then the next year's levy. So as you said, it's, it's a compounded effect that affects this year and all future years. And it, that you don't ever get that, you don't have the opportunity to ever get that back. It's not, it's not how PTO, property tax cap laws work. It's, it's all, you know, people say it's lost opportunity, but that's exactly what happens. You don't, you can't access those funds ever. So that, that's, you know, the hard part of trying to reconcile all that as far as in a time economic, distressed time for many, trying to, trying to deal with passing along a certain percentage increase along. So it's, it's a matter of, from our standpoint, I think the most compelling thing is the, the bogeys you have with potential state funding. And that, that, that has a high likelihood of having some diminishment over the next year and, and knowing that you might have, you know, you, you won't have those funds and they might be a million, $2 million less funds that if you're going to give up on these funds too, you're putting yourself in a, starting to put yourself in a bad situation going forward here. I mean, you're still in.
No, I'm just, it's, it's not an easy decision, you know, like you said, where we are right now, a lot of community members that are, that are struggling. So I see full size. I'm trying to think about the members in our community, members of Del Webb, like you talked about Mark, costs of goods are going up, you don't see people's salaries go up. So I struggle to put that burden on members of our community, but I, of course, you know, I'm seated here to also protect the district as well. So that's why I'm asking these questions. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Altmaner?
Just a, just a quick, yeah, just a quick observation and when you're thinking about, you know, you think about schools in, in terms of how they're funded, you know, the majority is coming from property taxes. We do have that dynamic of, you know, not, not being able, you know, kind of losing it forever if we don't, don't ask for it now. And that has, you know, over many years, that would have just a growing compounding effect. But the other thing that comes to my mind is we say, hey, let's make a stand and freeze property taxes and, and say, we're the only ones who do that. That disparity up on the chart that Mark had put up where, you know, our kids are generally funded less than all the other area schools, that gap would only grow bigger and it'd only tie our hands more to try to continue to grow quality and efficiency like, like we have been. And I think when you look at, you say, okay, that's great. I still can't, you know, I still don't want to spend the extra money. You'd have to say, well, are we using the money that we have now efficiently and effectively? And all those metrics that Mark put up, I would argue that, you know, shows and illustrates that we do, in, in fact, spend effectively and efficiently and warrants more, you know, continued investment. And I think the struggle with property taxes is it's structural across how the state and education is funded in Illinois. And if you just kind of pick off property tax as an isolation and don't treat everything else, you're disadvantaging yourself against everyone else in the state. So I just, from my view is, you know, more money or the passing of the levy will keep the playing field as even as possible. But also, you got to ask the question of, are we spending that money efficiently to warrant and earn that right to take that levy? And I would argue that that answer is yes. So just wanted to throw that out there.
Very good point.
Thank you, Kevin. Leslie, you wanted to say?
Yes. Mr. Altmaner, thank you for that presentation. I think that's the best one that you've shown us because it's, I feel that it's either I'm understanding it more now or you put it more in layman's terms for us to understand. So thank you for that. I do understand, as you know, I go to note for this levy for the past three years, and they share a really struggle with it because I, I understand, I hear what everybody's saying. I, I know there's a structural problem with property taxes, that's a state issue that's not going to go away anytime soon and we do rely on property taxes for our funding. And, and we are bare bones here. I, I think people don't realize we are very lean as a school district. So I appreciate that, that, Mr. Altmaner, that you do that and that we are able to something like that. But I do, I, I struggle with it. I, I thought long and hard about this this year and, and our community, we're, you know, our school district is, is struggling with COVID. We stand all the challenges that we've had and a lot of revenue that we've had this year. Our community has had the same loss. And like Melissa was saying, you know, costs are increasing, but salaries are not. People are losing their jobs. They're struggling because they have to stay home. And we have to, I feel like we need to take that into account as well. And so I feel, I feel that we can hold this for that for one year to be able to help our, our community through this difficult time, just like we're going through a difficult time. So I'm going to be a no, but I, I really appreciate you talking us through this. Thank you.
Any further questions? You know, the only other thing I'll add is, and it's not going to be, it's not helpful for this year, but going forward in the years, you know, we, we took some actions in our bonds recently that will have fairly significant ramifications, you know, rate wise. There is some relief coming for taxpayers down the road. Not this year, but the, the following years, we'll have some reductions in that rate, which will help people along. So we are thinking about the taxpayer. We're trying our best to find ways to get the, the overall. We're trying our best to find ways to get the overall rate reduced to help out. It's just unfortunate, you know, it's not going to be specifically for this year the way we've got it set up. So it's the only other thing I'll add. If there's nothing further, we're on the public comments. Were there any public comments for the tax levy?
No, there were not.
Okay. Being that there were no public comments, then we can adjourn the levy hearing. So I'll make a motion to adjourn the levy hearing at 7:45. Can I have a second? A second for Mr. Troy. This is a voice. So all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. We're adjourned from the levy hearing. We'll now move back and resume our regular meeting at 7:45. Can we have roll call?
Mr. Craddy?
Here.
Mr. Garen?
Here.
Mr. Gentry?
Here.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yeah.
Mr. Quagliano?
Here.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Troy?
Here.
Okay, we're all here still. Item nine is public comments. So do we have, we do have public comments for our regular meeting. And so who's going to read those?
Yes, we have three.
Okay, three public comments.
The first is from Nora Apostolopoulos. Hello, I'm, I'm wondering if it is possible for the decision makers to consider finishing the second trimester remote. I have been following plans for the return to school in District 115 in McHenry, and I admire their decision-making process during these trying times. McHenry community is predominantly blue collar, working class community, and they rely on the schools for so many reasons, including in order for their parents to work. But they're making this work and do not fall to the pressure of complaining parents in their community. It's been made clear by their school board that this is what we're doing, period. They've been also committing to going trimester by trimester and will return to school in late February at the earliest. See the link attached. Considering the goal in our community is to provide less disruption to learning, I cannot help but wonder the benefits of pushing this reopening when we are still in the midst of cold and flu season. If we have to monitor symptoms and keep kids home for every cough and sniffle, we know how much in-person kids can stand to miss just due to the guidelines needing, needed to be followed for symptom tracking we have to submit. Please consider how many absences you take typically during the months of January and February to the illnesses without a pandemic. I am opting for in-person only because my kids will have major disruptions to their learning if they have to change teachers at this point in the school year. However, I'm struggling to see the benefits of starting this round of in-person with a trimester still in progress, with cold and flu season still an issue. We've made it this far, and I do not see why waiting for the trimester to end can't be considered. Thank you. The next was from Star Underwood. Dear Board members, I want to thank District 158 as a whole. I think you've done a great job so far. I want to thank my son's teachers at Chesapeake. They're doing an amazing job given the difficult situation. Although e-learning is not an ideal way to learn, my son is thriving. You get out what you put into the learning, whether it's at home or even in the classroom. It doesn't all fall on the teacher. As a parent, I'm a son's first teacher and have no problem in assisting my son's learning and making sure he understands the material. The current schedule has been much better for our family versus the hybrid schedule. His teachers are very attentive and they really care. I'm extremely nervous about possibly starting a new hybrid schedule as it was extremely difficult transitioning for my son the last time. I'm also nervous about what we will be allowed with the class sizes. I'm afraid if we start hybrid in less than two weeks, we will be shut down again and then have another schedule change. My son needs more consistency. This bouncing from schedule to schedule seems more disruptive to our learning, his learning if we were just to be able to stay the course until it's truly safe to return in person. I hope that the district will continue to keep everyone safe by following the McHenry County metrics. If children are allowed to go back to school, in school, please keep the classroom small and distance. We are all tired of COVID, but it's just not safe to be back as business as usual. Perhaps the district can focus more on trying to help the children, the IEPs, and that are more at risk with their learning circumstances. I have heard from other parents that teachers need to be more accountable for live instruction time. Although I don't experience this issue, I agree that this should be done. Thank you for leading us in a difficult situation and doing your best, the best you can to help our children thrive and learn. Star Underwood. And the final public comment is from David Winston. Now knowing, based off of nine months of scientific data, that children, high school aged and lower, are at almost nonexistent risk of COVID-19, barring any other significant underlying medical condition, and that children do not spread COVID to others at the same rate that adults do, what guarantee do we have that students in District 158 will be allowed full in-person teaching next year? It is no surprise that the teachers' unions and many individual teachers have suffered a tremendous black eye with how they've handled this pandemic, especially considering the detriment to the mental and physical health of our children's students, which appeared to be completely disregarded. Further, the financial logistical strain put on thousands of parents and families has been tremendous despite the fact that I suspect most families would have preferred that their child partake in full in-person learning. As a concerned parent, what guarantee do I have that the district will do the right thing for the students, their purported goal, and confirm full-time in-person teaching next year and the most robust hybrid model for the rest of this school year? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for those three public comments from the individuals who provided them. We're on to item 10, revision and adoption of the agenda. So Ms. Lombard, do you have any report? We lost you.
Not, not this evening.
Okay. Is Dr. Slichter around? There she is.
I don't have any reports tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Altmeier?
No update. Thank you.
Done enough. All right, Dr. Zir?
No update.
Okay, Dr. Bezinski?
No, sir, not tonight.
And Dr. Del Castillo?
Not tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Any other items on this agenda anybody needs removed for any reason? Okay, if not, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with items 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 removed. Do I have a second? Second. Second for Mr. Garen. Okay. All those in favor of that, say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, so we're on to item 17. Is our FOIA request, they're listed in the agenda. Does any, do you have any questions related to that? Any discussion on those items? Okay, if not, we'll move to item 18. In his policy committee. Is that packet first reading? So is there any questions on that reading? Anybody, so that's your thing, nothing specific there. Okay, fine, then we can move on to item 19, which is a superintendent's report.
All right. This evening, I would like to share with you and I think our, I'd like to offer an update on our elementary hybrid survey that we've conducted. And I'd like to offer some, you know, say clarification, but more rationale behind, behind the survey, just to ensure that there's a consistent messaging and here directly from me rather than just in written form. You know, I'll start by thanking our parent community for responding to our request for a survey and sharing their preference for in-person versus remote learning and when we were able to return, for whenever we're able to return in-person learning. And I would like everyone to know that, that we're not happy with the fact that we're making this change of our teachers for our remote students. And if the possibility exists that some of our in-person students will feel that change as well. This is not a change that we take lightly, but this change was necessary in order to guarantee that our families who elect to remain remote would be able to preserve a full day of live instruction for our current remote learning schedule and not be impacted by our hybrid learning schedule, nor will they be subjected to any movement in and out of in-person learning should that environment change when the metrics tell us that we're able to return. Although painful, you know, we felt that this consistency in our learning environment and the quality of that learning environment was a worthy trade-off given the circumstances that we're dealing with. Feedback from our families, staff, and then directly from our students' mouths when we had them with us the week that they were here. Returning in-person was a priority. And expanding to more days in-person was a priority. And that's been consistent. They desired more in-person learning than our previous model afforded. This collection of data is providing us with the necessary information to maximize the in-person time that we can provide for our school district. We needed an updated account as it was September, the last time we asked our families what their preferences were. But we needed this updated account for how many of our families would choose in-person learning to determine which will model our system, which model they prefer. And based on the data, we can determine which model our system can handle. We'll be sharing this information publicly in January at a special board meeting once we have de-analyzed data and are ready to share. Tonight, a little bit later, and actually in just a, just a couple of moments, I will share with you the, the results of the survey in terms of the percentages, K through 12, of what people have selected for the second semester. Some of you may recall that we considered making this move with our support staff, our instructional coaches, and our export teachers and some of the other staff in the fall as we, to expand our, our person, you know, in-person offerings and allow for smaller class sizes prior to shifting to remote learning. And we did not make that decision at the time because these support staff, who we are reallocating back to the classroom right now, are a big part of our support structures for our teachers. And in the spring, they helped us make, make it through that transition period. But we're to the point now, when we shift back to in-person, we need to make a big move to maximize our in-person time to meet the community's needs and meet the requests that they've, that they've given us as well as meet the expectations that they've given to us. The shift we'll be preparing for, that we'll share with you in January, will do just that. It will offer the best possible learning environment for our students for whichever modality that they choose, for we are, for which we are able to, in accordance with the Illinois Department of Public Health and collaboration with the McHenry County Department of Public Health. This change has proven to be challenging, and I know that that is not easy on our families. But I'm very grateful for our community's response to the request for information to assist us in making this adjustment to meet the feedback that we received from them. Again, I can't say it enough, I hate that we're having to make this change of the teachers. But I do feel that this change will bring the best possible learning environment for our students moving forward. And I am excited about that possibility. So that being said, I would like to share my strength and I will share with, share with you the, it's a very brief couple of slides. Just a, just a visual of what the, the result of that survey has been. So it's very, I don't want it to be too small, but you can see at the bottom of the data, it's broken down school by school, but all in all, essentially where we're at is we're at a grand total of about, you know, just under, it's actually evolved since I clipped this this afternoon. It's about 75% have elected to come back in person and 25% to be, to be hybrid. And that varies from school to school, but most of them hover anywhere in between. You know, the lowest in-person is a Martin Elementary, 67% in fourth grade. And the highest, anywhere at 83% in kindergarten at Chesapeake, it looks like, at the elementary level. So the work that lies ahead for us here is to take this data and look and basically rearrange and see with six feet of separation what our class sizes can handle and then come back with what's the best approach for, for our hybrid model. But our goal is more days in-person for our students and a more consistent schedule for them. I, I'm really hoping and expecting that we're going to see a five-day in-person hybrid schedule of some way, shape, or form. The amount of time in the building will determine, be based on the, the number of students that we can, we can fit safely in the building and follow in the guidelines. But I do fully expect that the number of days is going to be right in line with what the community has been asking for. And what I'm really, I'm really happy about that. As for our middle schools, and those of you who don't see, I can move my, move all the faces here. For our middle schools and high schools, this, this represents, if you remember, we had them opt-in back in, before we were able to actually go back to the secondary level. But the original request, we had families reach out if they would like to change. We had them opt-in for the 25% model, if you remember. And some families opted for remote, but said they would change their position if it were 50/50. So whenever we, we were not coming back with a 25% model, we had families reach out if they would like to change their, their stance, given that we will be shifting to a 50/50 model after the semester. And this is a result of that. So at Heinemann, 65%, will be in-person, 35% remote model, 63% in-person, 37% remote. And at Huntley High School, 54% in-person, 46% remaining in remote for the second semester. If that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. I know it's limited information. When it comes to the elementary numbers, I just wanted to give you the raw data since that, that just closed yesterday afternoon at the end of the day. You know, my team has, has not had the time to, to do the work necessary behind the scenes because we needed the data, but we will be doing that beginning, it began today, but we'll be doing that in the days that we're working over winter break and then early when we return in preparation for a presentation in January.
The, the participation in the survey was pretty high level, right?
It was extremely high. In fact, when I clipped this, I believe we were about 85 families at our elementary level short. And when I clipped this to put in the presentation, our principals were calling those families just to make sure that their voice was heard and that email hadn't been lost.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a couple of percent, I mean, it's like 87.
And that's what we've done in, in the past. We've removed all the duplicates because if you're like my family, and my wife says, I took the survey. Did you take the survey? Yes, I took the survey. Now we've both been surveyed. I guarantee that there's a lot of others probably sitting around this table who are the same thing. Mr. Craddy may be smart enough to know, I'm just not going to take the survey and know that my wife is likely going to do it for him. But many families, they do do that. You receive the email and you, you try and help them into it. So we removed the duplicate, but then if a family is not represented or a student's not represented, our principals have been calling in the last couple of days just to be sure that each family has, has what they, what they truly want in terms of their learning environment and fully understand the decision that they're making.
Any questions? Go ahead.
I have a question, Dr. R. I'm not sure if you know the answer, but I just want to throw it out there. Is a family able to, let's say they start remote learning and they decide they want to go to hybrid or vice versa, they start hybrid, schedule's not working for them, they want to go back to remote learning. Are they able to toggle to or from, or at least have one chance to make that switch?
That will, I had that question a number of times in the phone calls that I've handled this week. And the answer that I've given to all of them is we will, we will kill ourselves to be as accommodating as we possibly can. We will, we will bend over backwards to be as accommodating to our families as we possibly can. It is easier to go hybrid to remote than it is to go remote to hybrid. Because if you're going from remote to hybrid, you are, you are, it requires certain space in the classroom that we're going to adhere to. So there, at some point, there's going to be limited space and there's not going to be any more space. However, if we're going hybrid to remote, where it can become risky is when a, we get to the point where a class begins, begins filling up. And we may be talking about needing to create a new section and pulling another one of our support teachers to create that new section. That's where it. That's where it can be tricky, but it is always easier to go hybrid to remote. So we'll do everything that we can to accommodate our families. That being said, I think we are, I do expect that a good number of our families probably chose hybrid, knowing that they wanted to keep their teachers, and will shift to remote if they don't like the model that they choose. So some families that we spoke with shared that with us, and I expect that, we kind of expected that. So we'll see what the outcome is. I mean, the fact that that decision was made may impact model that we are able to put together because the information is what it is that we have, but that's okay. We'll work through it, and as I said, the important thing is, we will do everything that we can to work with our families, and I think that's what sets District 158 apart from many other school districts. If we're anything, we're accommodating, as accommodating as we can be. Every family matters, every family heard, get their voice. In the fall, it was challenging with the volume of people that wanted to reach out, but every person that reached out this week got a phone call returned, and we worked with them individually, and it was fun.
Okay. Thank you.
Good.
I know in some of the emails that we've seen, there have been numerous questions on why we can't accommodate kids that remain with their teachers, and some of the relationships that have been forged will have to change. So if that's something that's still an issue for people online and have those questions but haven't emailed us, it is about space accommodations here, correct?
It is. I mean, it's about space accommodations, yes, but it's also, there's a couple of layers there. So we don't, like, we're having our secondary students zoom into the classroom. There's a certain level of personal responsibility and body control and the ability to sit in one place and pay attention for a given period of time, where a seven or eight-year-old, I, we discussed it, other districts are doing it. We did not feel good about our students zooming into a live classroom and having a seven-year-old watch an in-person classroom and feel that they're going to get the same quality of education that they are getting right now in our remote learning environment. I can tell you, as a parent of a third grader, I can't imagine going from what we have and that being able to equal this level of quality. It's fantastic. Given the environment that we're in, it's truly fantastic. I could not be more proud of our elementary teachers and the evolution that they've made in terms of the quality of instruction of what they're delivering to our students every single day. When they're with them in the computer and they're focused on them, if a student is deviating or they're fidgety because they're seven, they're with them, right here, and they can bring them back so quickly. Whereas in a hybrid model, if I've got seven students in a classroom, and say I've got the other 14 online of my 21-student group, you know, you almost need two teachers in the room to monitor, and if a student online is drifting off because you're helping a student, it's not the same as a high school student or a middle school student, it's totally different ballgame. We discussed that at length. You know, nothing against other districts that are trying it, that's an agreement that they made. We even had some of our teachers who raised the question because they didn't want to see their students go, and I respect that. But when it comes to quality of instruction, I don't believe that it matches. The pain that we're going through now, the trade-off is so, I don't want to say it's worth it because I, you know, I hate taking a child from a teacher and a teacher from a child, that relationship has been the big surprise of this remote experience. How tightly they've bonded has been remarkable, given our environment. But the full day of live instruction versus our remote families when we were in hybrid that week, what their schedule was like, is on the days that our students were in-person, the two and a half hours in the morning, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, our remote students had live instruction in the afternoon, and then on Wednesday, they had live instruction in the morning. There's an inconsistent schedule. And then on Monday and Tuesday of that week, when our buses were figuring out their routines and their routes, the afternoons were delayed. So our remote students suffered from the transition period of students leaving the building, the teachers getting their lunch and their prep and getting back when that was interfered with by the morning students, just normal starting of the school year almost. We're protecting that by giving them a guaranteed uninterrupted schedule that will never be interrupted by any other interruption. And if, and the way we viewed it is, if you're choosing to be remote, you're making this decision because that's, because of factors that are important to you, whether you're immunocompromised or you just believe it's the best for your child. And if that's a choice you're making, we want to give you the best possible learning environment possible. And that is live instruction all day long. And if we can do it, we're to the point in the school year that when we come back, we don't want to go back out, and we need to put all our chips in the middle of the table and make sure that it happens at a high level. And that's what this will do. A little bit of pain, I think, is going to come out on the other end with a lot of positives academically, and just knowing who the candidate pool of teachers that we're pulling from to place in these positions, I mean, these are some of the very best teachers that our district has to offer that have moved into these teacher support roles, teacher leadership roles. It's hard for them to leave these roles because they're so fulfilled by supporting their colleagues, but they're excellent teachers, excellent. So our families that are in a remote environment are going to, I think, I expect us to find, these families will struggle with the transition because it's not easy, but then in the end, I expect that the vast majority of them are willing to say, "I got two great teachers."
Yeah, and one of the concerns that troubles me that I've read or heard is that people feel like they're being punished to change, you know, in this process. And from everything that I know about the district, I don't see it that way, and I disagree with that stance. And I guess I just wanted to say that publicly because I don't believe it, I don't agree with it. And I think it actually does a disservice to the teachers in general to have parents believing that they're being punished in some way for this. It is the situation being what it is, and we're trying to all make choices and adjustments, or you are all trying to make adjustments. They're the teachers, you're the administration, and I just don't want parents to feel like they're being punished in any way. So that's really the point I just bring out.
And that's, you know, that's certainly not our intention. In this situation, it's very difficult not to feel as though it's all very personal because when it's your child and you're your child's best advocate, it's your job to respond and let us know and speak up for your child if they don't have a voice. So like I said, all the conversations that we've had have been very positive, and the families have fully understood our logic and our thought process and the why. And at the end, every conversation I had, and Dr. Switzer reported every conversation she had, we're grateful for the thought process behind what we are trying to preserve for them, even though they were unhappy about the teacher change. And I completely respect that, because I wouldn't be either.
Thank you.
And as a parent of elementary students, I'm not happy with the possibility that my daughter might have to change. She will not be happy.
Thank you.
Sean, did you have anything?
I did. Thank you, Dr. Rowe, for clarifying the teachers that would be assigned to the remote classes. I think hearing that is reassuring to a lot of our remote families that are concerned as to who they're going to have taking over for their child, which is some random person, and to hear that, you know, these are people that are in leadership roles, thinking that they're going to have two great teachers that they were assigned for the year. And I might have missed part of your first answer, I guess, because you may have already stated this, but it just, clarifying, did you say some kids that are lucky, families that are lucky to go back in hybrid, they are at potential risk for also being re-assigned teachers?
Potentially, yeah.
So we have some, you know, remote families that are really struggling, that are making that choice to go in with the premise that they're going to stay with their teacher, are they then again at risk of losing their teacher? If they're, you know, they're really making that decision totally like if they could, they would keep them home.
Potential. Let me give you a scenario that might make it a little bit, a real scenario that might make it make sense. There is a very real scenario in a first grade at one of our schools, where back in September, when families chose to be in-person or hybrid, this particular teacher of her 22 students, 19 of them selected to be in-person. So her day on A-Day, she had half of those, you know, what, nine students in the morning for in-person, and then three students in the afternoon, and then the rest of the students in the afternoon for their remote. But only three students remaining remote in that 22-student class. And another teacher just down the hall had six students of her 21 or 22 students elected to be in-person while the rest remained remote. So in our previous schedule, when you had an A and B group, and the remote and hybrid students were still together, you didn't feel an inequity in terms of a balance there at all, because when the B group was at home, they were still connected with the remote students in the afternoon for their live instruction when the A group was in, and when the A group was at home and the live instruction, the B group was in, so that they were still all together. However, if they were just in-person, and let's say we did a split day of, a split day, this teacher would split a group of 19 students in the two groups, whereas this teacher would split a group of six students in the two groups. There's an equity there in terms of the student experience and the teacher experience in terms of their workload. So in that scenario, we would have to take the entire first grade at the school and look at all of the students and then say, "Do we need to balance all of the first-grade classrooms to ensure that our students are having the smallest class possible?" Even though the class of 19 split into two groups might, can meet IDPH guidelines, but is that the best classroom experience when another classroom would have three in different groups? So that's the in-person dilemma that could exist, but we don't know until we get into individual teacher requests. So the possibility does exist for in-person adjustment if you have some extremes like that. I don't know what will happen because I haven't personally dived into the data myself.
I understand.
That helped a lot of people when I used that example, understand what might actually impact in-person students, because that inequity, not only is it not fair for the students and their experience in-person for having the smallest group possible, but then that teacher's balance and what they're working with, that's not the best mindset that I might have.
Thank you.
You want?
Bill, you have anything? Kevin, I didn't forget about you this time. Do you have anything that you'd like to ask Dr. Rowe?
He's muted.
Unmute. You're good? I can't, I can't tell you're good. You must be good.
I am good, thank you.
Okay, now I can, sorry, I'm a lip reader. Develop the...
Give me the point sign.
Thank you, Carol. Okay, nothing, you're good, Dr. Rowe?
Yes, sir. Yes, I am.
All right. Item 21, President's Report. I have nothing specific to report on, I'll make a couple of comments. Hey, I want to thank our parents for, you know, being so involved, grateful that they are as involved. It's always what's made this district high-performing, is parent involvement. So the fact that whether they agree with what we're trying to do, disagree, I appreciate their willingness to voice their opinions, concerns, especially the ones who do it in an extremely respectful, thoughtful manner, those people, we really appreciate their input. We appreciate even the ones who do it, we just wish they'd do it in a more thoughtful and collaborative manner as opposed to an aggressive position where whatever they think is right. We appreciate and respect all opinions, but certain opinions, when they're presented in a manner that doesn't make it for an easy discourse, is just not a useful, helpful way to solve issues and problems. And obviously, getting through this has been a huge problem-solving type of thing that's done. So that leads me to thanking, at this time of the year, getting through almost half a year, our teachers, the enormous effort they've put forth to try and teach in a manner that they've never really taught before, the strong effort. Again, we realize this isn't the optimal situation, but they continue to try to provide a high level of education, and we've seen certain results that give us, make us believe that a lot of good things are happening out there in that educational environment in spite of the hurdles that they've all been presented with. So I'd like to thank the administration for all the time and effort that's been put forth in considering all the different variations and gyrations of how to deal with this and have to stretch their thought process and how to make this work in this environment. And again, nobody wants to deal with this, but you've been forced to, and we all appreciate the constant effort that's gone on by Dr. Rowe, you and your team, all the ones involved. We really appreciate that. And all the support staff of the school district that helps things run, I think, you know, people like Chris Podzinski and his technology people trying to pull this off throughout this, and how well it's gone throughout this, and others that have really done an enormous job on behalf of the district, you make us all very proud of the efforts that have been put forth. So just, again, we can all, we can, you can do a couple of things. You can feel sorry for yourself and gripe, or you can just try and pull your pants here and do what's best with the best information you have to make things work, and that's what I think has gone on here in District 158, and I'm extremely proud of everyone involved, and thank all the board members here for all the thoughts that they've put forth throughout this process. You know, this is going to be our last meeting of the year, and I just want to wish everybody a lot of peace and goodwill and hopefully some brighter horizons for all of us in the coming year. So that's my President's Report. We can move on to item 21's Legislation Committee. I don't know if we have any updates specifically.
Not really. I mean, I feel like Mark touched on it, you know, the most, we should wait to see about the funding for education. So, you know, depending on what article you read, is it, you hear that it's going to be less or it's going to stay the same, but I think that's still unknown right now, and I think Mark touched upon that quite a bit, so.
Okay. If you have anything to add related to legislation, I'm not aware of anything myself.
Doctor Fermin?
No. Okay, item 22 is Consent Agenda. Are there any items to be removed from Consent Agenda by any means? Okay. If not, I'd like to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Do I have a second? Second from Mr. Craddy. Can we have Roll Call?
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Guerin?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yeah.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes. Items on the Consent Agenda are approved. Item 23, we had no items removed from Consent Agenda. We're on to item 24, action items. Item 24 dot one is our supplemental purchase orders and supplemental accounts payable is listed in the agenda. Do I have any discussion related to that? No discussion on that item. I'd like, I did make the motion, right? No, I didn't make a motion. So I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental purchase orders as presented in the amounts of $10,666,370,14. Do I have any discussion related to that? No discussion on that item. I'd like, I did make the motion, right? No, I didn't make a motion. So I'll make a motion to approve the supplemental purchase orders as presented in the amounts of $10,666,371, accounts payable for $10,632,71, as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mrs. Meyerino. Sorry, Mr. Gentry. The delay got you on there. But you're going to have to anticipate a little better there. Okay, can we have roll call?
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Craddy?
Yeah.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yeah.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Okay, the motion passes on item 24 dot two, the 2020 Levy Property Tax Extension. We did hold our levy hearing. Mr. Altmaier presented, and we had discussion. Is there any further discussion on this item? Would anyone else like to make any statements related to it? All right. If not, I'll make a motion to adopt the 2020 Property Tax Extension Levy as presented in the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gentry. They all waited for you this time, Kevin.
Right.
Okay, if no further discussion, then can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yeah.
Okay, that motion passes five-two. Okay, so we left the...
Before you, before you adjourn, if I could...
Well, we're not going to adjourn.
Well, before, before we return to closed session, if I could, just, just to point something out, it's kind of a, a little bit of a big deal with Steph Warren in our school district that you just approved on the, on the Consent Agenda, was you accepted the, the retirement letter from Rhonda Massachusetts. Rhonda has, Mrs. Massachusetts has, you know, this is, like I said, I know she's watching tonight, and I know she's probably mad at me now for calling this out, but we retire in education is a very big deal, and Mrs. Massachusetts has provided District 158 with many, many years of great service, and we will celebrate her as the school year comes to an end however we can. However, just accepting that letter, I just wanted to acknowledge that Mrs. Massachusetts has joined this school district when we had 900 students, and she has worked in six different schools, and has been a principal in this school district longer than I have been in education. She is a phenomenal principal, and I look forward to celebrating her the rest of the spring, and I just want to start the train by congratulating her on this step one toward major life transition. And, you know, again, just, I want to call out, that's kind of, it's a big deal.
Oh, it is, yeah. Rhonda's been here for quite a while, done a phenomenal job. If you're listening, Rhonda, thank you very much for all your years of service to our district. It's, it's been tremendous. Yeah, 900 students, yes, you're right. It's quite a small district back in the day, so, all right. So we suspended closed session, so I'd like to make a motion to re-enter closed session at 8:28. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mrs. Melendi. Can we have roll call?
Mrs. Melendi?
Yeah.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yeah.
Mr. Craddy?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Garin?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Okay, we'll be back in closed session.
Okay, we're back in open session. It's 9:23. Can we have roll call? Are we still here? No?
Probably me, right?
Yeah, so go ahead.
Hey, Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mr. Gentry.
Here.
Mr. Garin.
Here.
This is Mariano.
Here.
Mr. Crotty.
Here.
Mr. Troy, I'm here, and this is Melendi.
Here.
We're all back here. Excuse me. No action out of closed session, so I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting at 9:24. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Garin, a reliable second. Thank you.
Thank you, girl. Thanks.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, we're adjourned. Yeah, we're adjourned.